Good morning and welcome to a special meeting of Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today's Thursday, July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. It is ten a.m. and all members of the court are present. This meeting is called to order. If anyone please rise with the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Your Lord, I want to thank you for this day and thank you for each and every person that works for Hardin County and serves the citizens of this county and I have the opportunity to work with each one of them. Also, thank you for the opportunity for us to serve the citizens of Hardin County. Thank you, Lord, for each and every man and woman who serves to protect us here and elsewhere and bless them always. Lord, always lead us in the right direction to do what's right for the citizens and employees of Hardin County today and every day. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Liz. All right, we have a proposed budget. So item number three, a discussion and possible action to accept the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two proposed budget submitted by me. We received this last night from Candace McKinney and this morning there has been a change. So I want to make sure that you understand what the change is, as well if you have reviewed this. And I know you didn't have a lot of time to review it thoroughly, but the change is a collection rate. So in the past, we've always used a ninety-eight percent. I don't say always, the past couple of years, we've used a ninety-eight percent collection rate of added lower taxes. A state law change required that we increase that and our understanding was it needed to be increased to a hundred percent. So the proposed budget that y'all received yesterday from Candace was based on a one-hundred percent collection rate. And last night, very late, sometime after nine o'clock, I got a text from the auditor saying that that needed to be changed to ninety-nine percent. Is that correct?
That's correct. The Senate Bill two requires you now to look at your last three years of your actual tax collections. You can no longer estimate your tax collections. You have to look at your actual three past years of collections and you can choose the lowest. And so our lowest was ninety-nine percent in the last three years.
So that changed the amount of revenue that will come in. And so a quick decision was made, it was actually a recommendation that Ms. Gore made and I agreed with it. It will be in the general fund under the Commissioners Court budget, the contingency general line item. You'll notice that the report you received yesterday said four hundred thousand for that line item. And this morning that has been reduced and is now one hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. And that is to account for the loss in revenue when you've changed the collection rate from one-hundred percent down to ninety-nine.
Right.
So you'll also see a revenue line item decrease for that same amount to offset it. We decreased that expenditure by that same amount.
Judge, I was trying to look that up. Uh, can you repeat just the line item, please?
Yes, sir. It is in the Commissioners Court budget.
He showed it, thank you.
All right, oh, one, oh, four, oh, one, eight hundred.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Other than that, everything else that you have printed and in front of you today is what was sent to you by Candace last night. And before I go too far, I want to be sure and thank Angela and Candace for the amount of time they have spent putting this together, double checking it and probably triple checking it. And the idea is for you to review this. It's a proposed budget that I have a duty to file. I could just file this and not come to court with it, but I don't think that's a good idea. I want to make sure that you all agree with it before I file it. And the goal is to always, or at least in my opinion, is to always file a proposed budget that is very close to the budget that we will adopt here in about sixty days or less. Probably closer to forty-five days is the hope. So if y'all would like to quickly, Candace has put together this sheet that's only thirteen pages that talks about the variances and if y'all would like, we can go through that. Or if you have already gone through it and would like to ask me any questions, we can talk about that. But the majority of the increases are due to salaries and fringes. I asked Angela this morning what that amount is and she said the total amount for all salaries and fringes on the increases was around six hundred thousand. Is that correct?
Yeah, about five hundred and ninety thousand. That's a rough estimate.
Okay. And then we have some other increases for some equipment notes. And we had some other increases that we all have talked about in between our budget workshops that are included in here. There's one increase that I included that I have not already discussed with the court. It's a very minor increase in my opinion. It is a fifty dollar a month rent increase in the JP six budget. She came down, sat with me and talked to me about that and discussed the fact that her taxes and insurance have gone up more than fifty dollars a month, but she felt like if she, if she could get fifty dollars a month extra in rent, that that would help her out. And I agreed with that and I included it. If the members of the court do not wish for that to be included, we can always talk about that. And I haven't forgot Shirley, but Shirley has calculated the tax rate and we'll talk about that in the next few minutes. But Shirley, Lisa and Steve worked extremely hard on the tax rate, trying to keep up with all the changes in the laws, the changes in software, these new worksheets that have to be presented to the court by the tax collector that weren't ready until fourth something on Friday. And it was wrong when it was ready Friday, so they got it corrected on Monday. And they've been working very diligently to get that to us. And we could have waited a week or two to, to file this proposed budget, but I didn't want to do that. And so that really put Shirley, Lisa, Steve, Candace and Angela all into the good to get this ready for us. And so I want to thank them very much for all the take nine. So how is it waiting on the Secretary of State's office to update their information? Right.
I think it's important to note for the record, uh, there was one, I think it's in the current budget booklet that we have, that does a analysis or comparison on the last five or six year tax rate on where we were and now where we're at. And somewhere throughout my going on three terms, sitting on the court, I can't remember who made the statement, but you never go backwards on the tax rate. If you, if you have a tax rate, it never goes backwards. But I think it's very important to know because if you look at, at history, there was some, some times where this court had a higher rate and they went lower. And I'm sitting here as a member looking, why did they do that? I think it's very important to note the reasons why ours has some variance in it is because of legislature. The legislative body sends down statutes that regulate what we do here and we have to do certain things, just like some of the regulations to do with the auditors part of this process. On the six hundred thousand we were talking about a while ago and fringes and salaries, part of that was because our insurance went up as part of, you know, because of what the legislature is doing. So I think it's important to, to note that, that we're not just skipping around. One year we have this tax rate and next year we have this tax rate. Well, it's because we're going by what we're required to do by the legislature. And I know I was a broadcast statement there, but I was just wanting to make that statement to, a lot of people on the outside look in and say, why in the world would y'all lower the tax rate? You know, if you already, if you already have that, don't, don't give it up. But anyway, we, we were required to by legislate, legislation.
Yes, sir. I wanted to call out on page two of the variances report that we received from the auditor's office under the Commissioners Court group there. You'll notice that there's a total reduction of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That is mostly because we have almost finished purchasing the judicial software that we've been budgeting for the past few years. We do have a fifty-four thousand dollar amount to pay next year to finalize that for all of the district and county clerk and the courts and the DA and the county attorney. And then we took, excuse me, the amounts that are paid annually for support and we pulled it out of this Commissioners Court budget and we plugged those into each of those departments. So you will see the DA and county attorney budget increase to cover those expenses where this one decreased to, because we moved them out of this budget. The part that is paid by the district clerk and the county clerk are actually in the preservation fund. Is that where those are paid out of? And then the part that is paid by the district and the county courts will come out of the jury fund. So they're not in the general fund anymore. But if you look through almost every one of the increases to each of the departments are salaries and fringes. We did have a few increases that the county clerk requested, that was for office supplies and printing. The floodplain administration budget actually went down a little bit because the new floodplain administrator is not making what the outgoing floodplain administrator made. The, uh, the JP's all pretty much stayed the same except for JP two, there was an increase there to his budget for utilities. We'll discuss that. Anybody that had a bond in their budget, a public official bond, but they're not due for, to be sworn in in January, that public official bond came out and will always be plugged back in the year that it's needed for the elected official. So you'll see some of those in the JP office budgets. On page five, in the county attorney department, you will see what I talked about earlier, the software purchase and renewals line item there at the bottom, twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars. That is their annual support. I'd like to also note that the total amount of support that we will now be paying for all of the judicial software, including the DA and the county attorney, is much less than we have been paying previously. If I'm not mistaken, I hate to throw a number out here, but I, I think we're paying well over a hundred thousand a year now and I think we're going to now be paying somewhere around fifty to sixty thousand a year. But I can get those numbers for you and send that to you or we can talk about it in the, in the next open meeting. But the annual amount that we pay for support, sir, support and licensing for software for the judicial departments has gone way down when we switched vendors. Same with the district attorney, there's the addition of the thirteen thousand dollar supplement and the very first line item there for salaries, elected officials. And then the software at the very bottom line item is an addition. The rest of that is salaries and fringes. Oh, and there is the wireless services that we also talked about. We did reduce the equipment rentals line item enough to almost cover that. We've missed it by forty dollars. The election expenses budget increased by nineteen thousand and seventy-three dollars. And I believe that is mostly due to some printing and supplies that are needed for next year's elections. The auditor's budget, there was an increase for wireless services, but she decreased the office equipment rentals more than enough to cover that. The rest of that is salaries and fringes. The only increase in the treasurer's budget that was not salaries and fringes is the one hundred dollars for law books that we discussed previously. You'll notice in the tax assessor collector's budget, there was an eighty thousand dollar line item for outside services that the auditor's office split up into some other line items such as printing, postage and software license and support. But we did capture that increase that she requested around three thousand dollars, if I remember right, to cover those expenses. And then office supplies also increased by five hundred dollars. The purchasing department, I want to note that the clerical assistant in there did receive more than a three percent raise. If I remember right, she's making thirteen, fourteen an hour. We put her equal to the HR clerk that, who currently makes fifteen, fifteen an hour. And she received three percent on top of that, so I think it's fifteen, sixty, okay. Other than that, all of the other additions in the purchasing department are salaries and, the other salaries and fringes. She did also reduce her travel and training expense by five hundred dollars. Human resources, that's all salaries and fringes there for the three percent raise. Building maintenance actually went down and that is because of John and I agreed to reduce the amount of the courthouse maintenance and repairs line item down twenty-five thousand dollars. And we also reduced the maintenance and repairs at the Crocker Street building down twenty-five hundred dollars. So although there are, there are increases for salaries and fringes, there's an overall decrease there of nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. The constables all received a five percent increase. And Candace noted yesterday when we were going through all of this that the new constable in precinct three, Constable Brothers, has obtained an air card. Some of the constables have them and some do not, so we did add that line item to the budget to cover that. Other than that, there should be no other changes to the constable budgets other than the five percent salary increase that we discussed previously. And the sheriff's office, the law enforcement budget, all of those increases are salaries and fringes. And in the jail operation budget, it's the same. He did move some money around from two line items and that is between, between the training line item and the prisoner transfer line item, but it's a net zero balance there. Juvenile detention, that increase there is totally for salaries and fringes. Health services, there's a very slight decrease, moved some money out of the general fund into some of her grants, but it only netted in a hundred forty-seven dollar decrease to the county. In indigent healthcare, there's a total decrease of ninety-two thousand dollars. There was some of the expense line items that I reduced. And then there's also the reduction for no longer having a department head being paid out of that budget. There is an increase in the travel and training expense line item for that department.
Judge, could I ask, since we implemented the new health services, would there ever be a time where indigent health would be under that budget instead of their own?
I think they have to stay separate due to chapter sixty-one. I think it has to stay separate and accounted separately to make sure that we, no grants can cover that. In other words, we have to budget a certain amount of our, or make sure that we at least know that we may have to stand up to a certain amount of the revenue that comes in from property taxes.
Oh, what about WIC?
Uh, WIC is totally grant funded.
So they, they're under that health?
For accounting purposes, I think you're going to keep them separate, is that right?
Correct.
And that's to manage those grants separately. Uh, agri-life extension agent, there was a slight increase in office supplies by six hundred dollars and then travel and training, an increase of one thousand dollars. That is a, both of those items we discussed previously and the rest of those increases are salaries and fringes.
Alvin said he could give me his level of road fund.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Look at his.
I've used mine last year.
I had to.
That is all for the general fund. And then in the road and bridge departments, there's a few equipment notes that we've talked about previously in Commissioners Court that we knew would hit this budget. And there have been some moving of money to cover those notes. Most of those, almost all of those increases in the road and bridge budgets have to do with salaries and fringes for the three percent increase, unless I missed anything. I want to note, under the jury fund and the county court, there was a salaries temporary in there for fourteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars that is being paid as a salary to a grand jury bailiff. The total with salaries and fringes is fifteen thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and I've removed that totally from the jury county court budget. We may have to add some back before we get to the adopted budget. Judge Stover has informed me that it's unconstitutional for me to remove that from the budget. So I'm researching that with the county attorney and the district attorney and we're not finished researching that just yet. But I do want to say that the sheriff has offered to cover that. The, there's apparently an attorney general opinion that says he can't, that he or a deputy sheriff cannot cover the grand jury bailiff position. But we're still re, researching that and sheriff, I haven't discussed that with you. I don't know if you've already heard that or not. But we do appreciate you agreeing to cover it. And then in the dispatch share, there are two dispatch shares. One of them is seven thirty-five, three thirty, that is the revenue part of that, I believe. Is that correct, Candace? And you'll see where the revenue comes in from each of the entities, E S D number two and number five, the city of Coont, city of Lumberton, the city of Sour Lake, and then our local match, the thirty-two, nine, forty-four, which you would have also seen in our Commissioners Court budget in the general fund. That is part of the addition of the new dispatcher that we talked about. And then of course, the next group below that that says dispatch share, that is the expenses and it matches the revenue. Ms. Gore or Ms. McKinney, did I miss anything? I want some time to look over that and then see if there's any questions. I'm good, Judge, if you'd like. I entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two proposed budget as presented.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? Is there any department head or elected official here that has any questions about their budget? Anything that we didn't go over that you might have a question about?
Judge?
Yes, sir.
One thing, we proposed an increase to the civil fees.
Yes, sir.
Although if that's trickle down, would that take you into account on the rev, on the revenue side?
No, sir, not yet. It probably won't hit till next year until we see how that comes in. One thing I did mean to discuss with everybody is if you'll notice in the revenue under the, under the road and bridge and the general fund, all of our JP fees, our county clerk fees, our district clerk fees, those have all gone way down and that can only really be attributed to what's going on with COVID. We expect them to go back up. I did adjust those to try to be very conservative about that, but we're hoping they'll go back up next year. And the sheriff, as he just stated, he's going to adjust some of the civil process fees. That will come to court here either our next regular meeting or the following regular, regular meeting. It has to be done before September thirtieth and he's trying to help increase that revenue as well. But we won't capture that until, till next year in, in the budget.
Do we have to do a recorded vote on proposed or not?
No, sir.
All right.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll discuss and possibly have action to set the proposed tax rate for the year two thousand twenty-one. We have a packet here that's been presented to us by the tax assessor collector, Shirley Cook. And I'm just going to read these line items just to make sure we get it all into the record. The no new revenue tax rate is point five three, five six, five three. A one percent, one hundred dollar tax increase would increase the tax rate to point five four, one, zero, zero, nine. A one cent per one hundred dollar tax increase would be point five four, five six, five three. The de minimis rate is point five five, two, seven, two, three. The voter approval rate, not adjusted for unused increment rate, is point five five, six, seven, seven, seven. The voter approval rate adjusted for unused increment rate is point zero, I'm sorry, point six, zero, five, five, six, nine. Last year's tax rate is point five eight, zero, 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 zero. And the tax rate that is proposed to fund the proposed budget that we're here about today is point five six, I'm sorry, point five five, six, seven, 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 which you will note also include, equals exactly to the voter approval rate, not adjusted for unused increment rate. Point five five, six, seven, seven, seven would fund the budget, the proposed budget that we just voted to accept. And it does decrease the current tax rate down from, from point five eight, a little over two cents. However, since it's above the no new revenue rate, we will have to have a public hearing on that and the plan is to have that toward the end of August. Once we read through all the new legislation and find out exactly how the postings have to be, the notices and what have you, how many days we have to wait from those postings. I think the appraisal district has to put some information on their website and we have to go so many days past that before we have these hearings. So we've got to figure out what those dates are and then we'll start setting our public hearings accordingly. My hope is that at our regular meeting, our first regular meeting in August, we set all of those dates at that time. Do you foresee that we'll be able to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, again, even though we're lowering the tax rate, since it is above the no new revenue rate, we would have to have a public hearing. And, but it does not require that the voters approve this tax rate, the point five five, six, seven, seven, seven. I would also like to note that we did have the opportunity, if we wanted to, to adopt a resolution due to some of the disasters that we've endured over the past year. We could have included or increased that three point five percent cap up to eight percent. We did not feel the need to do that and we did not do so. And again, I think we have a good sound budget to go through the next year. This is the tax rate it will take to fund it. And I don't think it is required to have a record vote for the proposed tax rate, but I think it's best if we do it just in case we find later that there is legislation that says we have to. So if there's a motion in a second to accept that tax rate, I will request a record vote.
Motion approved.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to accept a proposed tax rate of zero point five five, six, seven, seven, seven. Commissioner Cooper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the proposed tax rate of zero point five five, six, seven, seven, seven is set as a proposed tax rate and we'll start setting our public hearings accordingly. Ms. Cook, do you have anything you want to say about this worksheet that you presented to us or anything else we need to know before we go, or we've already gone, before we close today?
If I, you just got a packet and it shows the general and then that second one tab is the special road and bridge. They drew it separately and then your unused increment rate, we just kind of tabbed it for you. If you have any questions about that, these are the calculations that the other sheet that you got, it just brings those down. It's good. Uh, Lisa thought you all needed to have this, but she only gave me one copy about steps, language that's required.
Okay. Will, will you give that to Angela and then Angela just forward it to all of us, please, if you don't mind?
Ms. Cook, can you refresh my memory? The ninety-eight percent, in, in that ninety-eight we're filing?
We're filing ninety-nine.
Ninety, okay.
Last year was ninety-eight.
Collection. The, the ninety-nine percent is the appeals that are currently out there in that ninety-nine or not?
The amount that is in, under protest you mean right now?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, there, what is included in your proposed value?
The certified values.
The certified, the certified values is a regular amount. It's, it's not.
Does it include the protests?
Yes, they are taken out. The, the protests are taken out. It includes the amount it was previously, so it, does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, so there is a possibility, I want to say, is there a deadline for that? When, when these protests are?
Uh, they, uh, when she certified, they still had about sixteen hundred, so I don't know that they have a deadline.
Okay.
I don't think they do.
I do have a question about the ninety-nine percent. Does that include people who are paying taxes and penalties and interest that were past due?
Yes.
That's included in the ninety-nine percent?
Yes, and that, that was an issue last night is that we were putting current and it, we called our professional in BBA and they, she told us that you use current, delinquent penalties and interest. That's everything that we collected.
Okay.
So on one, under the voter approved, it will tell you the last, there's, it's printed on your packet, the last, it'll say the anticipated, which we put ninety-nine, and then the three preceding years. So what we actually collect, you know, collected, so.
Including current and past?
Yes.
And then we mentioned?
Everything that we collected during that timeframe.
Got you.
Which they consider October through June thirtieth.
Okay. Her anticipated collection rate is ninety-nine. In year two thousand twenty, it was one hundred and one percent. In two thousand nineteen, it was ninety-nine and in two thousand eighteen, it was a hundred percent. So the lower of those three is ninety-nine percent.
Okay.
Which is what we should use.
Right, to be, be conservative.
And that's, that's on the, that's in your packet.
Yes, that's on page nine of your packets. The pages are numbered, but if you count to page nine.
On that county energy transportation reinvestment zone, it was adopted for ten years. We should be coming up on that ten-year thing. We should be coming up on that ten-year thing. Does your office want to take the lead of what we need to do to dissolve that?
No, sir.
You don't want to do that? I'll look into it, but I know that, uh, it was only passed for ten years, and then the court can come back and also dissolve it for lack of a word, and then that two thousand dollars goes into the general fund.
We have to compare it to the value in two thousand fifteen, so I don't know if that's when it started, so I don't know if ten years from now, if it's twenty twenty-five.
Maybe. Yeah, because we might have done it in fourteen, and then it went into effect fifteen. Because now with the new, uh, legislation, you don't have to have that energy transportation reinvestment zone to get that tax up on it before you had to have it. Okay. I want to add too, real quick about the tax rate is, uh, I just did some quick math before the meeting. If somebody owns a two hundred thousand dollar, a home is valued at two hundred thousand dollars, that would save them in county taxes only. Now, there's nineteen taxing entities in the county, I believe. Is that right? County taxes only, it would save them about forty-seven dollars a year for the decrease in tax rate that we propose, that we have, uh, set today. And any else on the tax rate?
No, sir. I just would like to say, you know, I know on our end, I'm sure the sheriff has costs associated, but everything I know in road and bridge continues to increase. COVID has made it more difficult to get parts and to get services. I had to have a parship from Australia, had to wait on it, had to go through customs in Houston and all that. And so, uh, I know that people will watch and scrutinize our budgets, but just, I'm sure people are aware, but I'd like to have it for the record that I know in our department, I'm sure all departments, but the cost of services are increasing.
They are, and I think what's going on right now with inflation is really going to hit us here in a couple of years with everything, but especially with, uh, the price of gas and, and, uh, vehicles and and maintaining those vehicles and, and then everything else that goes along with everything that we do to serve the citizens. I think it's going to go up. But it won't just be county government. It's going to be everything. That's my thoughts on that. All right. Uh, item number five, discussion only of any item, not only agenda without taking any action. Does any member of the court have anything? Any public official who's present? Ms. Cook?
I would just like to say that, um, in May, we had a, um, workshop here, and M V B A did on truth and taxation. Next year, when we request Connie Rose to come, I've already talked to Angela and Candace, and we'd like it to be, uh, commissioners, all commissioners and the judge, and that would be where you will, where all these, all this information comes from. It would help us all to understand a little better. Just want to put that out.
Is that a half a day thing, or?
What, did it take two hours?
Yeah, about two hours.
It took about two hours.
I don't know if Commissioner Cooper can stay that long, but we'll try. If Steve could buy lunch, we might could make the conversation.
The teacher probably.
Yeah. All right, any other official? Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Roberts to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Y'all have a great weekend. Thank y'all for your time here today. Uh, the proposed budget will be filed later today or no later than tomorrow, and as soon as it is ready, complete and, uh, filed, I'll email it to every elected official in the department here.